All right, good evening, everyone. It's Monday, July 10, 7:03 a.m. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Following town council members are present in chambers. Jason Mauer, Dee Dee Martin, Neil Pelles, Jonathan Frumkal, Terry Rooney, and Donalyn Wales. Following town council members are absent. Shawna Rorke, Kevin Reed, and Jessica Huska. As for item three on our agenda, tragically, we lost an incredibly important member of the Monroe community, Monroe resident and a volunteer in our community. Our EMS chief, Don Smith, passed away recently. I would ask that everyone take a few moments to remember his memory.
Just, and I'm sure this is echoed throughout, I've known him a long time and definitely a pillar of this community for a very long time. So I just want to say to his family, to all of the people in this town who he helped, to the entire EMS, who I know looked at him as more than just a coworker, as a friend, as a family member, that our condolences are truly with you. This is certainly a large loss, but our thoughts are with you and we are with you.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to consent calendar, I'm going to ask that consent calendar be passed as presented. Hearing no objections, it's passed. I ask that communication items A through L be incorporated into the minutes of our meeting. Item six, public participation. Is there any member of the public that would like to participate this evening? No. Okay. Is there anyone online that would like to participate during public participation this evening? Please remember unmute yourself. I believe it is star six or star seven.
Star six.
On your telephone. Once again, if you're here, if you've called in electronically, please remember unmute yourself if you'd like to participate. Hearing none on closing public participation. We have a number of appointments this evening. First one, resolution 23-077. Councilmember Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Resolution 23-077 resolved pursuant to the town charter, chapter seven, section five, the Monroe Town Council hereby appoint Samantha Spino, Democrat of 104 Century Road, to the Board of Finance for a term ending November 27, 2023.
Second. All right, thank you. All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Martin. We have a second by Councilmember Mauer to adopt resolution 23-077, which is the appointment of Samantha Spino to the Board of Finance for the term ending in November 23, 2023. Councilmember Martin, anything else?
I have to. I alter Mrs. Spino. She served on the Water Resources and Conservation Commission since 2021 and as a managing director was CFGI, the largest non-audited accounting advisory firm in the country. Fifteen years as an accountant includes a wide breadth of industry experience while in the private sector, big four public accounting and consulting. She both a bachelor of science in accounting from the University of Maryland at College Park, R. H. Smith School of Business, and she's a certified public accountant in New York. Samantha specializes in operational accounting and process optimization by collaborating with departmental leadership. She's coordinated with internal stakeholders to develop financial models and cash projections, strengthen accounting procedures and financial reporting, and implement new software systems and integration. And the appointment fills a vacancy created by the resignation of Mayor Hall.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I will note that this nomination of Samantha Spino went to LNA this evening. Mrs. Spino was interviewed and she was passed over to council unanimously. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of adopting resolution 23-077, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against, please say nay. Hearing none, this passes 6-2-0. Item D, resolution 23-078. Councilmember Martin.
Pursuant to chapter four, section two of the town charter, I hereby make the following appointment subject to the approval of the Town Council. I'm not doing that.
Just, I move the Town Council out the box.
Hereby approved for selectman's appointment of Richard Smith, Democrat of 61 Hillcrest Road to the Inland Wetlands Commission for a term ending February 24, 2027.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion to adopt resolution 23-078. Resolve town council, Monroe Town Council hereby approves first selectman's appointment of Richard Smith, 61 Hillcrest Road to Inland Wetlands Commission for term ending February 24, 2027. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, so by Jason Mauer. Councilmember Martin.
Richard Smith has been a Monroe resident since 2010. He's enjoyed a long and notable career in engineering and program management with experience in mining, automotive, and aerospace production. His volunteer involvement with the town includes our senior center, food pantry, Wolf's Den's construction, cert member, and most recently portraying President James Monroe for bicentennial events. He's currently a member of the Economic Development Commission from which he has resigned pending confirmation of this appointment. And it fills a vacancy created by the resignation of B.J. Hall.
Thank you. All right, any other discussion on the adoption of resolution 23-078? Hearing none, all those in favor of adopting resolution 23-078, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against, please say nay. Hearing none, this passes 6-2-0. Mr. Smith is here. If you'd like to come down and be sworn into your position.
Do you solemnly swear, or solemnly and sincerely affirm, as the case may be, that you will faithfully discharge according to law your duties as a member of the Inland Wetlands Commission to the best of your abilities to help you God or upon penalty perjury? Congratulations.
All right. Item C, resolution 23-079. Councilmember Rooney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion for this council to consider the appointment of Nick Letundo, Republican, 48 St. Ridge Road, to the Emergency Medical Services Commission for a term ending December 1, 2023.
Thank you. There's a motion to adopt resolution 23-079. Is there a second?
Second.
By Councilmember Mauer. Mr. Rooney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Nick graduated with a BA in Engineering and Government and Law from Lafayette College. Nick is employed at Acro Corporation of Americas, a business development manager. Nick has lived in Monroe with his wife and two children for four years. He's an active member of the Monroe Rotary Club and is excited to join the EMS Commission and continue to serve the town of Monroe. This appointment fills a vacancy created by the resignation of Lisa Payne.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of adopting resolution 23-079, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against, please say nay. Hearing none, this passes 6-2-0. Item D, resolution 23-080. Councilmember Rooney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion for this council to consider and approve the appointment of Jim Vance, Republican of 208A Wingrave Circle to the WMNR Commission for a term ending July 11, 2026.
Thank you. Councilmember Rooney, is there a second?
Second.
Now, Wales, is there a motion to adopt resolution 23-080? Discussion, Councilmember Rooney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jim has resided in Monroe for 25 years and is active with his church and the annual Strawberry Festival. Jim has an extensive history of broadcasting and is looking forward to sharing his experience with WMNR. This appointment fills an open vacancy on the WMNR Commission.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Councilmember Martin? No, okay, I saw your hand.
No, I'm trying.
Yeah, okay. All right. Hearing no other discussion, all those in favor of adopting resolution 23-080, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against, please say nay. Hearing none, this passes 6-2-0. Mr. Vance is here. If you wouldn't mind coming down to be sworn in.
Do you solemnly swear, or solemnly and sincerely affirm, as the case may be, that you will faithfully discharge according to law your duties as a member of the WMNR Commission to the best of your abilities to help you God or upon penalty perjury?
I do. Congratulations. I just dropped off, maybe before you leave. Okay, that's all for appointments this evening. Item eight, action items. Item A, Town Council Command, Finance, Education, Health, Public Safety Matters. Madam Vice Chair.
We have not had a meeting since our last meeting.
Thank you. Town Council Command, Plan, Zone, Public Work, and Park and Recreation Matters. Councilmember Rooney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We also have not a plus council.
Thank you. Town Council Command, oh, did you have something?
I don't have any report, but Park and Rec was to meet this evening, and that's been postponed until tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. Item C, Town Council Command, Legislative matters. We did meet this evening. We had a few items on our agenda. I'd already spoken on the appointment of Samantha Spino to the Board of Finance. We considered a commercial tax abatement application for 205 Monroe Turnpike, which is the Panera Bread property that was passed unanimously to adopt the tax abatement schedule recommended by the Tax Abatement Subcommittee. I anticipate that will be considered on our August agenda after a public hearing during our same meeting. We also passed down the 2023 Department of Agriculture and Farmers Market Agreement, which is a yearly application that we always make. Additionally, we considered the Harren Talk speaking contract, which will be considered as item B of our new business out again, passed unanimously, and as well as resolution 23-083, the Arches U.S. Proposal for Commission Consultant Services, which will also be considered later in our meeting. All were passed unanimously. All right. Item D, Strategic Planning Committee. We have never since our last town council meeting. Item E, EMS Building Committee. Councilmember Rooney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just, if I could use this time, just quickly to talk about Chief Smith. You know, it's very heartbreaking having got to know him through this process, and he was a big advocate in getting this off the ground and getting it done. You know, he'll be sorely missed. You know, I went to the services today. It's very sad to see a long time. Public service life, you know, ends so short, but he's going to be gravely missed. I mean, even though this is at the end of the project, he was a big asset and he was great to work with. He was reasonable. He was understanding. He was compassionate through the whole thing. As this council knows, and many people that were around this project knows, there were a lot of challenges. And, you know, there were times where it could have gotten a little tougher, and he was gracious, so he'll be sorely missed. That being said, we did have a meeting just to go over some final punch list items. As you would know, these situations, there's always little things, you know? This is a renovation, so there's always little things that have to be fixed. And right now, where we are, we're in that delta between getting this out of the building committee and back into the town hands. So we did have Chris Nawaki there. We did have Bill Phillips there at a meeting, and we just went over how things will move forward, you know, how things will progress if anything happens to the buildings, warranty items such as that. So moving forward, the EMS, if they do have conditions that need attention, they will immediately contact Public Works, and then from there, Public Works will decide if that's actually a warranty item or an operating type situation. So that's what we settled the last meeting. But other than that, that's all I have to report.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Item F, Councilmember Rorke is not here this evening. I do not believe the Open Space Preservation Acquisition Committee has had an opportunity to meet as there were nothing brought to their attention for land. Chairman. Item G, the first selectman's update. Mr. First Select.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Written update is going around, but before I get to that, I simply wanted to echo all the comments that were made earlier in this meeting about Chief Smith. He lost. The town is going to be tremendous. I won't regurgitate a lot of the comments that were made earlier because they were very well said by both prior council members. I'll just say that I've known my first real workings with Don is when I was the chairman of the EMS Commission. Goes back quite a ways, and his leadership, his passion, and his connection to this community was remarkable, and he will be a great loss to our community. So on with my written update, which you have before you. I wanted to first give a Pepper Street update. As you know, and as we discussed at prior meetings, I've been working with staff and the town attorney to facilitate the contractors' completion of this project within those parameters that are in our control based upon the state and federal requirements. As everyone is aware, the progress earlier in the spring was limited and of concern, but we are pleased that significant work is now underway and is proceeding. If you've been down that area, you will see that a substantial portion of the road has been lowered and regraded. That is the final section of roadway between Cambridge and Commerce. That was the area where there was a section of gas line that was identified that I reported on in the fall of last year, which was lowered over the winter by EverSource. So that is near completion. Contractor is going to be working on the Jockey Hollow and Garter Road intersections and those realignments and work in the next, over the next couple of weeks, which will be followed by the paving of the binder course for all of those areas, which we are told will begin by the end of next week, weather permitting, which is welcome news. As far as the culvert at Jockey Hollow, you've, you know, we've discussed the past, the concrete parapet walls were partially formed. There were delays which the contractor has attributed to rebar supply shortages, which I presume must have been resolved because they are projecting that work to now occur over the next couple of weeks. And they have also indicated we'll be working on the off-road work to continue working on the multi-use trail as well. But again, that is all off-road work. The next update was just a brief, a brief comment on the textile recycling project. You'll all recall that we started a program with Bay State Textiles. That agreement came before the council some time ago. So in June, our first month, we collected over 1,600 pounds of textiles, and the town will receive, as you know, we get a nominal amount back. It's just under $100, but that will go towards our sustainable CT program. And more importantly, we've taken 1,600 pounds of textiles that can be put to good use as opposed to simply being discarded. The Hammer Town Road Culvert, a new item that I want to bring before everyone's attention and make everyone aware, there is a downstream head wall on the culvert on Hammer Town Road that's near the entrance to the Fairfield County Fishing Game Association. The town engineer is determined it's in need of urgent repairs so that further erosion does not occur. We've got a design and a scope completed. Public Works is coordinating that work. It's going to be starting this month, and will take approximately one month to complete. That will require some alternating traffic, but there will be plenty of signage posted in the area. The police department's reviewed that traffic pattern. We'll post information on the town's website in regards to that temporary traffic pattern as well. And last but not least, the Wolf Park Basketball Courts are scheduled to begin within the next two weeks of that construction. You'll recall that that's being funded in part through a state grant, complete reconstruction of the playing surface, relining for basketball and pickleball, new hoops, new fencing, et cetera. So excited to see that project get underway in the near future. And that is this evening's update. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Mauer.
Just, this seems like the appropriate place for one kind of celebration for Monroe that was just announced right before this meeting, so I don't know if it's even known yet, but a Massey alum and Monroe resident, Nick LaRusso, was just drafted to the New York Mets.
Poor kid.
Yeah. Hey, I'm excited. So he had, he was a 2018 alum, had went to Villanova, then transferred to Maryland, and just literally just before the meeting started was drafted. So just a congratulations to Nick, to our baseball program, and just a fun little celebration for Monroe.
Great. And Councilmember Mauer.
Mr. Kelly, on the Hammer Town Road.
Yes.
The design, was that in-house design?
The engineer was, yeah, definitely involved in the scope and design. He, I know he interviewed several other folks that would be involved in that. Construction companies will be assisting with that to review and approve that, so it's a collaboration. But definitely approved by the engineer, yes.
So we don't see any company that would be working on that?
I'm sorry?
We wouldn't see, is there no contract with anybody who's working on?
I think they're looking to engage a vendor that they, that Public Works has potentially utilized in the past or is, you know, they're comfortable with.
Okay.
There's no, there was no contract that was presented for that, no.
And so the work is being done in-house, the, in conjunction with?
With the contractor, yes. Yes, as an urgent matter, yes.
Fine, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I have another quick question.
Sure.
Do you know when the next sustainable thing is?
The next?
The next date for the sustainable textile thing?
Oh, well, there was, I mean, that was more of a kind of a launch to kind of promote the program and to encourage it. The bins are out at, here at Town Hall, the library, and at Garter Road, so it's kind of an ongoing thing. I know that there was discussion with Mr. Holesworth and members of the Conservation Commission to kind of, you know, keep it alive by doing promotions at various different like events, putting up on the website, Facebook posts, that kind of a thing. I think there was some discussion of maybe doing something at the Farmers Market as well, so keep it.
Particular day?
We don't have another like single day for them to come down and do a mass. I mean, not that we couldn't, we could certainly ask again, but there was no. That was kind of a kickoff type of an event that they agreed to do, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. All right, that's it for action items. Unfinished business, we do not have an update this evening. Correct, Mr. Kelly? No update, no update on?
No, there's, no, nothing, no, and the town attorney wasn't available either, so.
Thank you. All right, new business, acceptance of individual donations, exceed $1,500. Can I have a motion to accept the following donations to the Bicentennial Committee? $2,000 from Caruba Incorporated, $10,000 from the Monroe Playground Foundation Incorporated.
So moved.
Motion by Vice Chair Lapelis.
Second.
By Mr. Mauer. Mr. First Select.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we are greatly appreciative of the support of the Bicentennial Committee, and all these funds will go towards the various celebrations, not the least of which being the fireworks, which is our largest expense that entire day. So Caruba is a company that's been in town for several years, and they've been great, corporate citizens of Monroe, and we appreciate their support. Everyone's very familiar with the Monroe Playground Foundation, and we're incredibly grateful for this extremely generous contribution towards the Bicentennial Committee.
Thank you. Hearing no other discussion, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor accepting those two donations, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against, please say nay. Hearing none, this passes 6-2-0. Item B, resolution 23-082. Madam Vice Chair.
I move that the Town Council adopt resolution 23-082, resolve that the Kenneth Van Kelly Board Selectment sounded Monroe is authorized to execute and deliver the Town of Monroe speaking contract and any associated documents filed between Harren Talks Incorporated for presentations at Massey High School.
Vice Chair, is there a second?
One second.
It's named by Donalyn. It's Mr. First Select.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the council is fully aware that town has been party to various settlement agreements in concert with the opioid, ongoing opioid litigation matter. I wanted to not only present this matter before you, but also an update on where we are with those distributor settlement payments. We've received to date nearly $42,000 in the distributor settlements. The settlement administrator recently sent municipalities projections so that we can see how these future payments will unfold, and Monroe is currently projected to receive a total of over $189,000 between, up to and including the year 2038, and that includes the 42 we've already received. The funds can be utilized for very specific things that are in one of the exhibits of the agreement for various remediation uses. I established an administrative team to review the potential ideas to utilize the funds that's consistent with those, that, those categories provided in that settlement agreement. I convened a team that included the police chief, EMS leadership, our Director of Community and Social Services, our Director of Health, and our Finance Director, as well as our Superintendent of Schools. So we've discussed a lot of different ideas, and one of the things that we all really wanted to focus on was to provide education to hopefully prevent opioid abuse and misuse, and wanted to target the youth in our community. And Superintendent of Schools relayed that he had, when he was principal of Massey, had a speaker, Chris Harren, who's a former professional basketball player who himself is in long-term recovery, present at Massey. And his speech, his story has been kind of nationally viewed. He focuses on prevention, challenging audiences to rethink how they look at disease of addiction, and changing the focus from the last day to the first day. Mr. Cobza said to me that in all of his years, that remains the one presentation that he feels has been the most impactful to a, to a school audience. He said it was the most powerful, impactful, impactful presentation that he has attended. Since the speaker has not presented in over four years, none of the current Massey grades will have seen this presentation before, so we will hit in one shot four full grades. This contract will allow for two presentations, one for the school during the day, another one that could be not only for students, parents, but pending space availability, community members as well. Again, it is covered by one of the categories. It's been reviewed by the town attorney, and you have his letter of opinion, and I'd ask that we move this forward so we can hopefully impact some students and their, and their lives.
Thank you. Hearing no other discussion, all those in favor of adopting resolution 23-082, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against, please say nay. Hearing none, this passes 6-2-0. Item C, resolution 23-083. Madam Vice Chair.
I move that the Town Council adopt resolution 23-083, resolve. Kenneth Van Kelly, first, second.
that Kenneth M. Callog, first, second of the town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver the town of Monroe's proposal. The associated documents filed between Arcadis U.S. Inland Wetlands Commission, application two oh two three dash thirteen, quarry ridge.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Is there a second? Sent by Donald, what else? First Selectman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Some time ago, I brought a similar agreement to this council's attention, which you did approve. That was for an application that was subsequently withdrawn. A new application is now before the Inland Wetlands Commission for the proposed quarry ridge development, again, on Turkey Roost Road. Staff has worked with the Inland Wetlands Commission, who once again have determined that they require an independent third-party review of the application. They've recommended the services of Arcadis once again, and their copy of their proposal has been provided. Once again, the commission is required that the applicant reimburse the town for the cost of such services. You have in your packet a letter from the representative, the property owner, acknowledging their responsibility in that regard, excuse me, in that regard, and you have the town attorney's letter of opinion regarding the contract. I ask that you approve this so that I can report that through the planning and zoning administrator to the Wetlands Commission for their next meeting.
Thank you. Hearing no other discussion, all those in favor adopting resolution twenty-three dash zero eight three, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against, please say nay. Hearing no nays, this passes six to zero. The only unfinished item was Saint Jude Property and Community Center project update. There any hold participation on that item? Please remember unmute yourself. Hearing none on closing public participation, I am adjourned this meeting at seven thirty-five P. M. See everyone August fourteenth.
Alan's correct. I don't have my calendar in front of me.
Yeah, yeah. I still believe that you're right, man.
Yes.
Thanks, Carrie. Thanks, Carrie. Have a good night, everyone.
Good night, all.